Okay, it's six o'clock. It's six o'clock. Thank you, ladies. It's six o'clock. The meeting of the Rome City Council will now come to order. This is March the 14th, 2024. We do have a quorum. Michelle Tai is out this evening and will stand for invocation with Pastor Van Sant. Thank you for being here, sir.
You've got your heads and close your eyes. Dear the Father, I thank you for this day and I thank you that you bless us with. Lord, I pray that you please us to be with this city and I pray that you please us put your hand upon it. I pray that you please us be with our elected officials, Lord. I pray that you please us be with mayor. I pray that you please us be with Chief Davis. I pray that you please us be with Chief Estes as well. And I pray that you please us be with the city administrator and our city council, Lord. I pray that you please us allow them to make the best decisions for this city. And I pray that you please us allow us to continue to move forward, progress. And I pray that you please us allow us to make the right decisions for the citizens of Rome. And I pray that you please us allow those that are citizens of Rome to be the best citizens that we can be. And I pray that you please us continue to prosper this city. And I pray that you please put your hand upon it, especially during this weather that we're about to have. And I pray that you please us keep those first responders safe. And I pray that you bring them home to their families. We ask you these things in Jesus' name.
Quick comments. The council is not permitted to take action or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. However, they may make a statement of fact regarding the item or policy. They may also ask that the item be placed on a future agenda or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. Public comments require the speaker to submit the sign-up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, are limited to three minutes, and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult or slander any individual shall be caused for removal from council chambers.
Okay, what you got? First speaker is Ashley Majors. Our next speaker is Valerie Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, council members. My name is Valerie Smith. My address is 1131 Mount Lane, Oklahoma, Texas. My husband Greg and I are sponsoring the 30 and 11 Merrill and City Council debate. Those candidates running for City of Rome election on Saturday, May 4th, 2024. The debate will be held on Saturday, April 20th, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Rome United Methodist Church. Candidates for mayor, as well as city council places sworn five, are invited to participate in a single moderator debate. The debate moderator will be announced next week. I've been working on trying to get somebody from the county, either from the judge's office or one of our judges. So I'm waiting on some feedback from them. I'm going to create flyers with headshots for the candidates and they will be distributed next week as well. As far as questions, what we're looking for for the questions, just to make it fair, is I'm really looking for questions that represent the interests and concerns of each of the subdivisions that comprise the City of Rome. I'm requesting the citizens of each subdivision to work together and formulate two questions apiece for submission to be used in the debate. The questions should be relevant and important to the community and city. Questions will be provided to the moderator and used during the hour-long debate, and the moderator will maintain control of all the questions. So I look forward to seeing everyone on April 20th. Please plan to come. And here's one of the candidates. Make it very timely.
Our next speaker is Sam Easton.
Evening, councilor mayor. I'm Sam Easton. The bonds, I saw a post on Facebook, somebody talking about they wanted the whole new engineering done, they wanted all the surveys, they want all new studies done, it's all needs to be changed. There's no way that can go on possibly be done tonight for this kind of election. And two, we already have engineering. Okay? Are you saying that you want to just fire a pin and a horn and start over? So let's get real. What's the real issue? Second, very quickly, I'd like to talk about the events during the agenda tonight. When a family has hard financial problems and their house is falling apart, they have foundation issues, they're not going to move in. They're not going to events. They're not going out to eat. They're saving money to fix the house. Okay? Events are entertainment. Events are luxury. Events are something that once that house is in order, that we can afford. I'm careful with 75 bucks. Now, that 75 bucks, taxpayer dollars, going forward to entertainment. I won't say by taxpayer dollars, but to fix the ceiling and some big repairs.
Our next speaker is Deborah B. Kraft.
I'm Deborah B. Kraft. I live at 360 West Second. I wanted to thank all the businesses and the individuals in this town who have donated their time, products, items for the auction, for the raffle, for the Easter. A lot of people have came together to make this upcoming event very special for the kids, and that's what it's all about. As far as a special use fee, I know y'all are talking about that tonight. The only thing that ever been charged for electric is $25. If they had to pay that for the bounce houses, that'd be fine, but the $75, what does that get? People to be able to use the park that our taxes aren't paid for and we aren't paid for? It's our park, we can use it. So hopefully y'all will rethink that. I mean, if the electric needs to be paid for, so be it. But other than that, the city's not out any money. They're not out anything else, because we've always made sure every year that we've been doing this, that the park is cleaned up after works that everybody's paid for. So the city guys didn't have to do anything, because we respect them and their times. I appreciate it.
Our last speaker is Ashley Majors.
Hello. Can everyone hear me? Okay. One, with the parks. The negativity for children's events needs to stop. So council, please consider, if, again, it's concerned that if it's a political event, as Ms. DeGarmo spoke at the last council meeting, have someone follow her around. But this is for the kids. It has always been for the kids. And it's $75. I will be here after the council meeting. If everybody wants to pitch in $5, please give me $5, and we will get it back to the city to cover it. So with that being said, let's move past 2021 and the argument. Okay. The reason why I'm speaking tonight, and I apologize if I did not come prepared, I was reached out by a developer, a real estate agent and the landowner that owns the land to the entrance of Bywell. They have been going through hurdles with the residents there. Council, you are elected to know what's going on within the city. There is, they, the developer has not been able to develop that piece of property because of an abolished HOA. They are looking to put in seven, a close to $7 million for a medical development. And if it doesn't get, if they do not get this passed, it will be a liquor store gas station going in. So you, as council, mayor, everyone, this should have been added to the agenda long ago. You know, we don't need another gas station liquor store within the community. And, you know, we need to move, we need to move forward from it. And when I heard this, I was a little taken back. And, you know, I think everybody needs to know, even citizens that are here tonight, you know, need to know what's going on in the city, as I always say, and even when I said to, you know, the developer, a real estate agent who is a commercial developer, one mouth equals five mouths. Know what's going on. And, you know, we don't need it. We need to move past and we need to be positive. We all want, we as all citizens, want to be prideful of Rome. We need to stop the negativity, and we all want to be prideful of the community. So please, and as well, again, for the parks, for the Easter egg hunt. It's put on by residents for their time, for the children. I will be here after the meeting. You can pitch in $5, $10 to cover the $75. So please, you know, and God bless. It's Easter. Thank you again. God bless you. Okay? Y'all have a good meeting. Thank you.
All right. Announcements, March 2024, Citizens Police Academy, every Tuesday evening. Is that six o'clock? Five o'clock?
6:30.
6:30. Okay. March 23rd, 2024, Easter egg hunt, family park. Is that 11:30 to 1:30? 1:30 to 3:30, because there's a Newark Easter egg hunt going on as well. Yeah. Okay. March 28th, council meeting. And then March 29th, 2024, city offices closed to observe Good Friday. Council have any announcements? Okay, let's move along. Go to consent agenda. If council has no objection, I would like to pull number two, clarification of that ordinance, 2024-06. I'd like to pull that off of consent agenda. You have no objection?
Nope. Okay. Item number one, mayor, has already been approved at a previous meeting, so you can move past that one.
Okay. All right. The clarification of ordinance 2024-06. Last week, when I requested that be put on the agenda, the resolution I had seen over at City Hall actually had us voting in at the Newark Fire Hall, but it looks like that has been changed at this point. And we will, that one will vote here in Rome as well. I did want to clarify some of the things that they filled in some of the blanks on that as to the costs, where is it? That will be incurred. Thought it was on here. I'll just, I'll just ask the city administrator, because I don't see it on this particular copy. And I picked this up yesterday, and I have not really had much opportunity to take a look at it closely. But I wanted to get a breakdown of that on each... Maybe it is. I guess it is here. Okay. For Proposition A, that is going to be for $3 million. The estimated annual increase in the amount of taxes on a resident homestead with an appraised value of $100,000 to repay the debt obligations to be authorized if approved. That's going to run $80.30. The...
That is the maximum.
That is the maximum annual amount.
On $100,000.
On $100,000.
Okay. All right. And then Proposition A. Proposition B, that's the $11 million, and that's showing to be estimated maximum annual increase in the amount of taxes on a resident homestead with an appraised value of $100,000 to repay the debt obligations to be authorized if approved. That will run $294.45. And then the third item. Proposition C, that's $3.5 million, estimated maximum annual increase in the amount of taxes on a resident homestead with an appraised value of $100,000 to repay the debt obligations to be authorized if approved. That will run $93.69. So that we've got some clarity on that. I'd seen some questions on social media about it. The other thing I wanted to ask about, I know that council approved this on the 10th of February, but I understood that something with the, with the bond election had to be in by February 16th? And there was some urgency after that? Is that not the case?
I'm not sure what the question is.
I just thought there was some urgency to get it in before February 16th.
You do have to notify your bond council, and you do have to get it to the county, and the 16th was our deadline.
Okay. But we're just now getting the resolution.
No, ma'am. This resolution was approved on the 10th. Then they go and they true it up when the numbers are decided by council, and they fill in the rest of the blanks. We discussed that on the 10th as well.
That's what I wanted, clarification.
And since we are in the process of clarifying, I would like to be very clear that these numbers are approximates at this time. And as we continue to work with our bond attorney and our bond financial advisor, we will get that broken down into pennies on the dollar for the tax rate. And one thing the city very much needs to be mindful of is we will pay off our current debt, so you will have a reduction in your INS rate, because we will pay those off within the next 12 months or so. So you're going to have some offsetting costs. So don't take just what's been read into the record as multiplying that by your $100,000 worth of valuation and therefore making an assumption that that's what your home mortgage is going to go up by. There are variables that exist within these bonds that have not been discussed as of yet. And part of the reason why it's not been discussed is because we are vetting all this information with our financial advisor and our bond attorney, because we don't want to put out incorrect information that inflames the situation.
Monthly staff reports and board minutes. Any questions, comments on that?
Need a motion to approve that?
We do.
I move to approve the clarification of ordinance 2024-06.
Aye.
All right. Monthly staff reports and board minutes. Any comments or questions?
I was looking through the reports and noticing how thorough they were, and I appreciate the transparency and the time that it took each department to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Go to public hearing. Rome City Council is to conduct a public hearing to consider a plat and variance request. One tract being legally described as tract acres A-635 MEP and PRR 1.0270 acres and lot 1 through 6, block 23, original town Rome, also described as located at 250 BC Rome Avenue, Rome, Texas 76078. It is 619. We will convene into public hearing.
Yes, Ashley. Come on up.
As you know, since I just spoke about not having, since I just spoke about not having another gas station or liquor store within our community, I think we need to have a business that we can be prideful of and within the, within, sorry, there's just people talking. That we can be prideful of. So it can be close, but speaking to the developers and the business owners, so that would be part of our, that could be part of any events that we could have, and, you know, just be prideful, you know, of going to get our local flowers and just not a gas station. I mean, I love our gas station, I, you know, but we need to, you know, being out in, being out in the community within Wise County, that is what we're known for. And it's a drive-through, and that's, that's what we don't need. And, you know, again, citizens and council, we need other businesses. So thank you, and thank you for coming to Rome.
Evidently, no one heard me, which is an odd case for me. I agree that we don't need any more gas stations, but what is the business that's coming in Thank you.
It would be an Ace Hardware is under application.
Come on up, guys. Talk to us.
We closing the public hearing and moving on to the next item?
I wouldn't quite, I figured they could talk during the public hearing as well. They want to, they can. Carbon Atkins says you can talk if you want. He's the man.
My name is Tom Knox. I'm one of the developers, I guess, as you said, but really owners of the hardware store, Jason Blevins and Alan Wolf. So there, you're back with me as well as our site planning consultant, Jeremy Black. So we identified Rome as a place that we'd like to come to with an Ace Hardware store. We have five other stores across, three of them are in Texas and two in Oklahoma. Benton and Justin are the closest ones to here. So what we, if you're familiar with Ace Hardware, we run good stores. We, I think you'd be proud to have us here. We'd be proud to be here. So we're looking forward to taking this building that is somewhat of an eyesore. I'm not going to say that tongue in cheek there. It's, yeah, we're going to turn it, we're going to keep the look of it, but to some degree, just the old look, but then turn it into something that looks very nice. Not sure what kind of things you'd like to ask during the public hearing. 250 BC Rome, which is a street from the library. It was, what was the name of it? It was a mill, milling ring.
Thank you, Mr. Knox.
Depends on how quickly we get this.
Any other questions?
Okay, Mr. Knox, thank you. So if we're going to close the public hearing, I do think council has a few questions about the issue, so we can move into that part of the agenda.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing 6:25. Number one, discussion and any necessary action regarding replant. One tract being legally described as acres A-634 MEP and PRR 1.0270 acres and lot 1 through 6, block 23, original town Rome, also described as located at 250 BC Rome Avenue, Rome, Texas 76078.
Thank you, mayor. This has actually been before the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple of times as we've worked out some of the questions as it relates to the site itself and some of the issues with the existing building and just the general layout of the property. You will see in your packet that I provided you with schematics from what the front of the building is proposed to look like, as well as some requests that the business has as it relates to parking, concrete versus the aggregate for the parking surface, the number of spaces, as well as a potential loading zone, the use of septic that is currently on property until they are able to work through a boring under BC Rome, since that is a texted property or texted road. We do not have the authority to grant that, so it will take at least a year, if not longer, for them to just go through that process to get the bore. And then they would be required to hook up to the city's septic system within three years. We also have a provision in the conversation that we've had with the business owner that would give them three years to transition to a fully concrete parking lot versus the aggregate that goes kind of back and forth. So there are, there's a fairly good description of the conversations, but the applicant is here if they have any questions of council that you would like to address.
So on the building, you're getting rid of all the tin? The, the front of the building, I don't know if you, if you look at it closely, you'll notice that about half of the building is really large sliding doors. If you've been by there from, they've been utilizing the building, they're opened up. And so those doors will come down. So we will have to fill those in. We're going to fill that in. One of them will become the entrance to the store, so it'll have a glass storefront with some rock and some other things around it. And then the other ones that we take down, I believe you have the architect's condition there, that it's got a combination of some stone and then some hardy, hardy board that's been stained to look like wood. So it's, it's really going to have, and then we're going to have an awning coming off. Going to replace at least part of the roof and those rusted metal, I told you, are really expensive, by the way, to buy rusty metal panels. But we're going to take some of those metal panels and then to make it awning down, I believe it's like 100 feet of the, of the structure. So it'll have that. And then kind of a pitch design in the entrance, so they pitch. That's kind of the explanation, I guess, regarding.
Any other questions?
How high up are you going with your rock and hardy board or whatever it was you called it?
I don't, I don't have the exact, you can kind of see the, I don't, I haven't seen exactly what the number is height wise. Jason, I don't, I don't know. I mean, you can kind of tell by looking at it there, but it goes up, the rock goes up a certain. Yeah, yeah, that's right. The edge of the, the eve of the building is about twenty feet.
So you're going up about two-thirds with the rock? And then the other two sections here by the front door and then I guess to the east is gonna stay solid tin?
The sections that don't have a door on them already will stay tin.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that we're trying to accomplish is Rome, if you look at it from a hardware standpoint, Ace Hardware Corporation was not looking at Rome. It's a little bit of a, what we would call a green market. So we're coming in early. It's hopefully to get in early enough before we can afford to put it in. If you wait too long, then you can't afford to go in. So we're trying to go in, you know, to do a really good job, but then to not overspend, I guess. We can't build a six million dollar structure. So that's what we're trying to do. And that's the reason for the parking, like we'll start out with some concrete parking. Then as business grows, then we'll continue to expand that concrete.
So y'all were talking about Justin. What about the one at Boyd?
And your, your question is?
Your Ace Hardware, you have a Boyd?
We don't have anything to do with that store, so I'm not sure what you're asking. It's, well, Ace Hardware, Ace Hardware is not really a franchise, it's a cooperative. So each of the store owners own part of Ace Hardware Corporation, so it's not a typical franchise, it's, it's a co-op. So they're a separate co-op. We happen to own the store in Justin as well. Store in Boyd is owned by the Moon family and has been owned.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I appreciate the nod to the history by leaving a part of the existing structure, but still moving forward with something that the community can use and appreciate. So with that, I move that we approve the site plan for Ace Hardware with the following conditions. One, that we allow a non-conforming use for a loading area to face B.C. Rome based on the construction of the current building. Two, we allow for sixty-seven parking spaces at full buildout as opposed to the ninety specified for retail areas with an initial number of twenty-four being provided upon the opening of the business. Three, we allow the use of the existing septic system with a future connection to the city sewer system. The business will be required to connect to city septic within three years of approval. Four, allow for a combination of concrete and aggregate parking spaces, parking surface areas for a period of three years. Five, allow a non-conforming use for the existing building as it relates to the current fifteen-foot setback. Six, allow the developer to use a pylon sign that will not exceed the height of the building and that will be turned off from ten P.M. until seven A.M. And seven, allow the existing native landscape along D Street to count toward the landscape buffer requirements due to the, due to the topography and drainage in that area.
I second that. And that was the reason for all my questions. I wanted the metal. I like the look.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Knox, thank you. And number two, I've got text dot on here again. I'm gonna go ahead and have, ask the city administrator to remove that. I've tried several times with our text dot rep and I haven't been able to get through to her. And I know that she had a personal issues. She had a death in her family. So I'm just gonna remove it at this point. We'll add it again when we need it.
I, I would like for that to remain on the agenda. I'm still working with the city administrator on the letter to text dot. And so we're working on a draft. It should be ready for the next meeting.
All right, number three, family park resident user fees. That's the city administrator. I think Mr. Shoemake is actually the one that asked for it to be put on the last meeting, but the city administrator will take that up.
At this point, this was simply a placeholder for council to discuss this issue. I know that this has come up several times before and we have discussed the use of the park by residents as well as by non-residents and the fees that are charged. I do believe this topic is being driven by the Easter event that is coming up in just a few weeks. So I'm happy to open the floor to council direction on this, whichever way you'd like us to go.
I struggle to remember how we were doing it for resident fees. Were we just waiving them?
So in this instance, I believe that the fee was waived on that particular issue. And I've got what we have charged in the past. So generally, we charge a seventy-five dollar event permit with a hundred dollar deposit that's returned upon whoever is using the park, leaving it in the condition in which they found it, and then a twenty-five dollar electrical fee. There, there are some concerns and some questions as it relates to whether council should or have the authority to waive said fees, which Mr. Carvin could probably answer a lot better than I can. I do know that that park is used frequently and I know that there is a general thought that it doesn't cost the city anything other than the electrical, but there is staff time to get it ready and mowed. We did it if it's in an off week period of mowing that park. There's also cleanup that goes on with the restrooms, especially if those are used after the event. So there are some ancillary fees that that seventy-five dollars generally covers. And it's not full cost recovery from the standpoint of using the park itself. But it's also not unusual for cities to charge fees, usually at a reduced rate for a resident and usually a higher rate for non-residents. So Rome is not particularly abnormal in that approach. It just depends on which direction the council and community wants to go. My understanding, this has been discussed for many, many years back and forth.
I think as a council, I can speak for all of us that we fully support the egg hunt. But we did hear a concern from a community member about the person who brought forth the request for the egg hunt, Miss Bee Craft, and her been running. So we wanted an opportunity to consult with council to see, make sure we weren't, there wasn't a conflict there.
I don't believe it was Miss Bee Craft. I believe it was Miss Mize that brought that forward, but just for clarity's sake. We'll just correct that for, for everyone who's on the meeting. Carvin, would you like to borrow my microphone?
A couple of quick ground rules. As you know, cities, general law cities like Rome generally charge fees only for the purpose of recouping the cost. It's not a tax. It's supposed to balance off the athletic costs for the city to operate the facility or whatever it's, whatever we're talking about. So that fee is actually become public property and you're not supposed to give away public property unless it's serving a public purpose. So when you waive a fee, you're basically giving up a public asset, just the seventy-five dollars. That's okay. You can do that. That's not, there's nothing wrong with that. But you do need to give some thought, what is the public purpose that's being served? So if the community is driving a benefit, your determination of that that's serving a public purpose is really what, what controls. So you want to always be careful, you know, when you can't just waive fees without having some thought to it. And the council is the deliberative body that should give some thought and give direction to staff. This particular function meets our test that it's serving a public function. Now as to political use, we are absolutely, or you're absolutely, the city's absolutely prohibited from spending any public dollars or using public assets to advance a political agenda, to advocate for or against it or anything on the public agenda. That includes elections. So if someone were to try and use one of our parks and get us to waive the fee so they could hold a political rally there, I would have to say, no, that is prohibited under the Texas law, under the Texas election code. So if the, if the assertion that someone was using the park for a political purpose were true, then I would say you shouldn't do that. If it's not true, if it's being used for a typical public holiday celebration, that's generally gonna be okay. If you guys think that's serving the public's entertainment, recreation, all those things are good public purposes. And if you think that's being served by this particular group, then you can waive the fee. That'll be fine.
I think to Miss King's point, we don't have any problems with egg hunt. In fact, as long as I can clarify our baseball scheduling, you'll probably see us there. It was the manner that it was brought forth to us. Because I know, I can tell you from last year and then this year, all we keep hearing is we want transparency, we want transparency. To me, how it was brought to us was transparent. And that's why all these questions are popping up with, what is the ulterior motive here? And that's why I think that was brought up and why I had it brought up that again.
This is the third year though, that, that the Easter, and I'm just remotely involved. But this is the third year that they've put this together and it is at, it's at private people, they're, you know, it's at their expense and in addition to the donations that they get. And I have to admit, I did not see it as being political. I looked at it as being, you know, little kids showing up for the raffles and the Easter bunny and.
I think just like with everything, when a citizen brings a concern to us, we, we have an obligation to ask the questions. And so we're asking the question. So is there something, Carvin, that we should do to ensure? Or how, how do we ensure that it doesn't become a political campaign?
Well, there are penalties associated with individuals violating ethics codes or ethics commissions. So if that, if that happens and those violations should be reported to the ethics commission and let them deal with this. The city in general does not enforce those kinds of things. We don't enforce the election code. We're not doing that. In, in general, I think the city is safe to presume its citizens are acting legitimately, that they are acting in good faith. And that unless you have some direct testimony, evidence, something to the contrary that tells you the applicant is not acting in good faith, I think you can rely on their statements that they're gonna have an Easter celebration and it's not intended for political purposes. You know, I think the proof will be in the pudding. I mean, if it's, if it's occurred in three years and it hasn't been a political rally, then I think you can in good conscience proceed for the next year and assume the, assume the best. And then if it doesn't turn out that way, then next year you will have some evidence upon which you might decline to waive the fees based on past performance if it's the same applicant.
Miss Mize, since you're here, I'll ask the question, is the event intended to have any kind of political campaign purpose? Okay, that satisfies me as a council member.
Any other comments or actions?
Has the city paid or waived the fees in years past or will this be the first year?
I'm not sure that we had a schedule of fees before like twenty seventeen, was it Bee Craft, the thing?
Well, if this has only been going on for the last three years, then I don't think it would apply with those dates. I know that when I first came into office, there was a conversation that I had with the folks who host this about the fee. And I was very clear that that's not within the city administrator's purview to waive that and that it would have to go through council for that discussion. But the organizers are here and they could probably tell you. I think other people have stepped in and paid that for them so that it wouldn't be an issue. But I'm sure Mrs. Mize could answer that question.
Actually, I think it was Mrs. Mize that paid it last year. Ashley paid it the first year.
Thank you.
Last year, whenever we were getting ready to do the Easter egg hunt, I took the time to sit down with Ms. again and go over what was in store for that event. And told her that we would like to see if we could get those fees waived. And I thought that she would bring it to council and it didn't happen, basically. So not to say that, that, that she didn't, that she overlooked me. I don't think that was it. But the journey is, we're a community here and that's, that's my drive. I, I work real hard at trying to succeed. I feel like we have a lot of hurdles that we have to overcome in this little city and I think that we need to change that. If people don't like things in life, why don't they help? Why don't they volunteer? If, if the fee needs to be paid, why don't somebody step up and pay it? I, I do my part. Mine's not budgeted. And I can tell you, it costs a lot of money to put these on. It's not free. And I, I do it because I love children. I have plenty of children and I enjoy being, participating with them, to bring them together and see their faces. I mean, it's, it's, you can't take anything better than that, honey. And I want you to understand that I asked y'all to waive the fee before I ever signed up for this candidacy. So I, that's not, that's not my play in this game. It never has been. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Lee, Ashley.
I just wanted to say, it's unfortunate that the Easter egg hunt is falling the same time that it's political season. So it's very unfortunate. So again, let's not let that take away from the children. This is something that has been going on, that the citizens are putting their own money in to have the event. The first year I was, was able to attend. I was not for the past couple of years. But I know even Miss DeGarmo pitched in, you know, and Miss Mize, Miss Wilson, both, Miss Wilson with Leanne, I mean, Joanne, Lisa and Joanne both pitch in a lot of their time and money to make sure all of the children come. I mean, there was like a hundred kids that came one year.
Ashley.
We had good turnout.
So I just want to.
And I want you to know, the heart of the event has never been questioned.
No, I know, it's the heart, I know.
But we do have a responsibility to ask.
No, I know, but I'm just, I'm letting the public know.
Wrap it up, Ashley.
No, I know. I'm just saying, I'm letting the public know too. I'm not trying to discourage anything. I'm letting everyone in the public know about the event. So if we do pass it, so they can come. We all want it. No, so that's it. I just want.
This can be, this can be a win-win for everybody.
It could be a win-win. I just want.
Okay, wrap it up.
Yeah, no.
I just have one more question. So I was one that made the motion to approve. Miss King seconded. But afterwards, you know, a bunch of discussions were made, not amongst us, but the citizens. So if you had a Black Lives Matter group come in or KKK group come in or an atheist group come in, would y'all want us to do this for them? That's my question.
All right, we've kind of opened up a whole can of worms here and we need to cut it off. Carvin Atkins is giving me the eye. Please. One more comment, Carvin Atkins says, one more. Yeah, we've, we really have. I mean, if you guys, if you guys want to just say, no, we're not gonna waive the fee and vote on it, that's.
I would just like to say that whatever you, action that you take, and my, my name is Eileen Priest. Whatever action you take is going to roll to other events. I would just say that. And that my example is, we did a fundraiser for the beautification fund of the city and that was my husband and me.
the city, and that was my husband and me, and I just can't tell you what rumor and abuse that came from that in town, so then, whenever we did the rest of them, we, we didn't ask anybody to waive any $75 fee, we paid it out of our pocket, and the, and the purpose of the whole event was to add money to the beautification fund for the city of Rome, so there will be others that are outside of the Easter event, that will want to do good things, positive things for the city, and they're going to come to you, and they will ask you whether or not you will waive the fee, but you are opening the door that somebody just mentioned, and so, I'm not saying I'm against, I've already made my donation for this year, for the Easter egg hunt, I've already done it, because it is important, and I want that to happen, and I want there to be joy in this community, but I'm just saying, you will be facing other things, and so, the precedence that you set, you're going to have to deal with it every event, is my prediction, so, just, just be careful, don't get yourself in a, in a spot you don't want to be in, and you shouldn't be, but I just want you to know that that particular thing rolled, rolled, you know, what was against other people, that were just trying to do something positive for the community, or just having fun in the area, just be thinking about it.
Thank you, Mrs. Priest. All right, council, want to take action on it?
Well, one more thing, real quick, I don't mind anybody coming here, it's just that I don't think we should be supported, so, yes, that's the motion to deny the funds, I will rescind the waiver to the fee.
Second, I second the rescindation, I guess that's a word, with the understanding, or with the statement that we fully support, I personally fully support the event, however, using public funds at this time, and knowing that others will come, we are, we do have, I think, tonight on the agenda for us to talk about city-sponsored events, and getting more of that, so it comes off of the backs of citizens, but at this time, I feel that it's not a route that we need to go down, so I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, number four, city events to co-sponsor or host for the community.
Thank you, Mayor, so to, I guess, lead off from what we just talked about, in many of the cities that I have worked for in the past, the city either co-sponsors events like this, or they host it themselves, and staff participates in the process, I have heard in the time that I've been in Rome, that there have been concerns from those who have put on events in the community, that staff does not attend, nor do they plug into the process, or be a part necessarily of the hosting, and I would like to bring to our community's attention that there are several events that we do host each year, that may not be recognized as city-type events, I did put in your agenda memo, some of those community-oriented events that have been held over the years, which is the Fire Department Splash Day, and, and they have, in the past, had an open house, of course, the boot drives for the Fire and EMS department, our Fire Department does fire prevention events for the schools, we have Santa sightings, the Police Department at one time had a car show, I know they are still going into the elementary school, and they are reading to the children, we still have National Night Out, we at one point had Dumpster Days, but now we have both Trash Pickup, that's kind of been suspended, Drunk or Treat, at one point, we had Pioneer Days, we have others that are a little bit more privately hosted, if you will, Veterans Day Ceremony, Memorial Day Celebration, Christmas Tree in the Park, Easter Egg Event that we discussed here today, a Veterans Car Show, so there are a number of things that go on in the city, from the standpoint of either groups that have an affiliation with the city of Rome, or that the city sponsors directly, there just doesn't seem to be much overlap between the two groups, and so, one of the things that I would like to find out from council, is to what level are you all looking for us as we continue to set the standard for the city and events to participate, excuse me, or partner with these individuals who have been so altruistically minded on behalf of Rome? I also included in your packet, the printout of the results that we received back when we did a citizen survey this time last year, and though, as we all know, we did not receive enough responses on this for it to be statistically significant, it does give us some direction, so you will see that the number one choice of the residents who did respond is that the first and second was, they'd like to see something done for Independence Day, the second that they chose was National Night Out, or actually, those are reversed, National Night Out first, then Independence Day, a Fall Festival runs way up there in the top, Movies in the Park, Drunk Retreats, Splash Day, which are some that we still do, the Santa Sightings, Fall Festival, Touch a Truck, all of those are things that they suggested, they also had some open-ended responses of a classic cart and bike show, now, full disclosure, I don't know what a cart is, so maybe somebody could enlighten me as we go along, but a farmer's market, a chili or steak cook-off, someone suggested a barbecue fundraiser for city projects and improvements, firefighter appreciation event, something different than any of the other towns, and a festival where the volunteers would come in to defray the cost, so, there's a lot of interest in this, and I understand the feedback that we've received as it relates to taking care of our primary business and our primary level of service, but I do think we can run some of these in tandem, to create that sense of community at the same time that we are building on our infrastructure, and we are building on neighborhoods and things as the community continues to grow, I know there's been some messaging on social media that Rome is landlocked and will not be growing, but I can tell you from our ETJ map that sits on the back of this wall, that Rome is a total of 19 square miles when it's fully built out, and we have a lot of growing left to do, there's not a day that goes by that I don't have developers want to talk about that, and they will want, these folks who are going to move here are going to want city-sponsored events that they can attend with their families, so, if we could get a measured response to partner with folks who are already doing some events, it would take some of the financial burden off of them, but also might give them a different platform from which to draw from additional volunteers, we could also leverage the Veterans Park that the city owns, that is currently being, I believe Rome Veterans is the majority of the folks who are using that, but there are things that we can do there as well, I saw during one of our events last year, and I don't recall if it was Memorial Day, or one of the others, that citizens had put some criticism on Facebook, that we didn't have any flags at the park for that weekend, and they were right, we need to be doing those type of things, and that's a relatively inexpensive cost for us to put that out where it's a part of the community, so, we're bringing this forward from the standpoint of getting some council feedback, and if you want to have some time to think about it, we're perfectly happy to continue this discussion, but I think we're at a juncture now where we can look at branching some things out, and seeing what are we officially going to do as the city of Rome.
I love the idea, I don't know about the rest of you, about co-sponsoring, and I would love for the first one to be the egg hunt, like, this is, this is hard, so I, I would love that, and then, I also want council to know, and I shared this idea with Ms. DeGan, we've had several neighborhoods that, we've had conversations about the entryways into different neighborhoods, and how are we going to upkeep the ones that don't have HOAs, or do have HOAs, and how can we partner as a city, and so, something that I have shared with her is that Northwest ISB does the big event, I believe the date is April 24th, and so, but partnering with things that are already going on in the community, and then if we have some city staffers that could also be present at each of those locations to help the kids, and kind of lead and work together, I'd love it.
Yeah, you said it perfect, definitely on board with Ms. King.
I would like to get more feedback from the citizens regarding their preferences of what we might undertake, and I would move to table this until the next meeting to get feedback from our constituents.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Motion on the table, if the motion on the table doesn't get a second, then it dies, and it would be open for a second, but I do.
Draw the motion.
I move that the city co-sponsor the egg hunt with the city, with the volunteers, and that we also, I don't know if we need to get some more input, I think we have good input, but then we look at maybe picking a few other events to co-sponsor and really prioritize.
Just a question with that, though, if the city co-sponsors it, the, the private citizens still have to pay a fee to hold the event in the park, even though it's co-sponsored by the city? I'm just asking.
Y'all can work out how you want to allocate it, we're only talking about $75.
I would just suggest leave it alone right now, and then, you know, the next event, if the city wants to co-sponsor, I think that'd be great.
I have a motion on the floor.
Second?
And all in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, number five, memorandum of...
If I just could gain some clarity before we move on from this item, that is one of several that we have looked at here, so, I would need some additional council direction at some point, if we are going to look at the things like the flags for the veterans' event, and I know the veterans' group is doing a Christmas tree lighting that could potentially be partnered with the city, or made larger in some form or fashion, I've listed some other things on here, like a 5K run to raise money for area food banks, Movie Night in the Park, Hazardous Waste Days, if we choose to sponsor something like that, so if council would like to bring this back at another subsequent meeting, we could certainly discuss that more in depth at that time, but it's a little bit, we've had a lot of feedback from residents, both for and against, and we need direction as staff, so that we have a policy decision as to which way you'd like us to go.
I move that we table this topic until we can talk to our constituents for the next two weeks, and address it again at the next meeting.
Second?
The other motion still stands about the co-sponsor? Okay, and so, you're going to table it?
Going to table the discussion of additional events.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Number five, memorandum of understanding for Regional Steering Committee.
Thank you, Mayor, this is additional housekeeping, that if you will recall, the city of Rome is partnering with the cities of New Fairview and Boyd, along with Wise County, and Aurora, excuse me, I don't want to leave anyone out, to pursue a regional water district, and as part of that, the $10,000 that each of those entities donated on behalf of this effort, needs to have a centralized banking city to maintain, monitor, and report out the funds, the city of New Fairview has graciously agreed to be that city who would hold the funds and expend it based on professional services and other things necessary to pursue that type of a water district, and they would be happy to give us reports as necessary, and provide updates to council, so, this memorandum of understanding simply outlines that financial tracking.
Discussion or motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding of the Regional Water District to allow the city of New Fairview to serve as a central finance bank account holder.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number six, Public Works surplus disposal requests.
Thank you, Mayor, I think this one's pretty self-explanatory, but rather than put it on consent, and then have it on the agenda at a later time, I've listed in your agenda memo what we're looking to dispose of, there are brass fittings of various sizes, you have photos in your packet, that Mr. Dominguez has brought forward, that we would like to get rid of, as well as some scrap metal that we would clean up the shop, and that would allow them, with whatever funds that they receive for those, to buy current equipment and current supplies, if you will, and as you know, we've taken delivery of two of our Public Works trucks, which are absolutely amazing, thank you to the community, and thank you to council for that use of those vehicles, and we would like to have permission to auction off the old trucks, we were just simply waiting on the third to arrive, so we have a 2001 Ram 2500, and two 2008 Ram 1500s, and so, there are pictures in your packet, and Mr. Dominguez is happy to answer any questions you have about this issue.
I'm making a motion to approve the request to scrap the usable metal, as requested by the Public Works Director.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven, law committee round the office.
So, has everyone had a chance to think this over, have any opinions, I'm, at this point, assuming that we could get five people to volunteer their time, which is very difficult in this town, it seems like, if we could get five people to volunteer their time, and give them the city residents a voice in oversight of these bond funds, at least as a check, that's what I would move, is that we have a bond committee that asks for advisory role for administration of this expenditure that we're trying to undertake, is there any discussion?
I guess my only, as we keep, it's just something small, but we keep it more advisory, and I think oversight may mislead, just keeping the terminology on advisory, it's, it's that part of that board committee, or bond committee.
Same time, I would expect them that if they see something that they see amiss, that they would bring it to us in an advisory role.
Absolutely.
I agree, I think terminology is very important here, especially in, especially for us, when there have been so many questions about transparency, and we have fought that battle, and so, I, I do not want the word oversight used in any form, but I could totally support an advisory council or committee, I could even support it being beyond bond, but to a visionary strategic planning type committee, that would also have, be able to provide input as to what the bonds, you know, what bond projects may be prioritized, I do have something also that I need to read from Ms. Ty, she could not be here tonight, but she's asked me to share her suggestions, so, this is me putting on my five-foot-eight wand, okay, Ms. Ty says she's making suggestions based on what she's researched, she's seen five to 50 people on a committee, depending on the city, she says maybe each council member suggests one or two people to be on the committee, that would make a max of 10 committee members, but could be anywhere between five and 10, no more than two council members would be on the committee, is her suggestion, the committee would report directly to council, and serve in an advisory capacity to the council. The committee would report directly to council and serve in an advisory capacity to the council. All recommendations would be made by consensus of the entire committee. Recommendations are to reflect a citywide perspective. Equity of facilities and equipment to meet city needs would be considered. Although specific items and categories will be discussed and evaluated by the committee, the exact wording, timing, and packaging of any recommendations, which would go to voters, would be the final decision of the city council. She suggests that the bond committee could meet every quarter or even biannually to review the city's capital improvement plan. They can review presentations from consultants and staff regarding finance, water, sewer, community facilities, streets, and parks. They should tour existing facilities and have the opportunity to discuss what they believe would be in the best interest of the city as a whole in preparing recommendations to the council regarding long-range planning and prioritizing projects for voters to consider at bond election.
So would that statement represent a charter or do we need a more detailed document?
On that one, I did look up the Austin ordinance that you had presented to us. And what they, they use is some bylaws. And I've read the bylaws and they're actually pretty good. Now, Austin is a little bit larger city than we are, so some of this doesn't exactly mesh, but it's pretty close. I mean, I think we could probably, you guys could fine-tune these bylaws and I think you could get where you want to be. And again, the key, using the word advisory is pretty powerful, too, because that means it doesn't have any binding authority. And advisory committees are not subject to the Open Meetings Act, Public Information Act. So that's either good news or bad news, depending on how you like to comply with those two particular acts. But an advisory committee is just that, it gives you the appointing body advice on the questions that you present.
Yeah, and I think it would also help address some of the concerns that Ms. Major just walked out, expressed earlier today about developers outside of Biwell, which that was the first I'd heard about it tonight, so.
Just to add to it, the Austin did not contemplate council members serving on the commission. They had non-council members fill, I think it's 11 positions, which I will just tell you, in my experience, getting above about five to seven gets, it really gets difficult. Because you're going to have to have a quorum, you're going to have to have everybody show up. It gets harder, not to mention just finding seven volunteers even gets problematic. Fifty, I would say, is not possible. I've, yeah, I've worked, I do represent some boards that have 35 members and their quorum is like 18 or 19. And they are constantly having trouble getting that many people together. So don't go there. I would say keep it a relatively small number. I do, I advocate for using odd number and probably do allow for votes. I probably wouldn't require 100% consensus. I know in this town we can reach agreement, but there's potential that one gag plot could spoil the problem and couldn't get any action on that, so.
Previously, when I've served on committees similar to this, we have decided at the first meeting, what is going to be consensus? Is it going to be four of the seven? Is it going to be three of the five? Four of the five?
Austin, they used the quorum. So they established their quorum at six out of 11. And that, you had to have a minimum of six voting in favor for an item to pass. That's just what they were.
I know last, last meeting, there was concern about the role of city employees in this and burden associated with it. So I would view this to be more of a self-driven committee, I would hope, with minimal involvement.
Mind if I don't weigh in just a little bit on that issue? They do need a staff liaison of some sort, because there are a lot of moving parts in a municipality and there are a lot of legal constraints that we are subject to that others who have been in business or have maybe served on another advisory committee or board are probably not going to be aware of. And I don't want them to run three months down pursuing something to find out that's, because we're a type A general municipality, we can't do that at all. So that's the only caution that I would give to you, is a staff liaison, I think, would be important.
I agree that it would be, it should be staff that schedules the meetings, it should be staff that prepares presentations. So it would be a weighted responsibility on staff. So how does staff feel about? Michelle's recommendation was once a quarter or once every six months?
I think once a quarter would be good. I think once every six months is probably too far apart for the board to, for the advisory committee to be effective to council. I think not only do they need to meet with staff once a quarter, but they need to present to the council once a quarter, because it doesn't do any good if you don't hear the information. And that should not come from the staff liaison, in my opinion. It should come from whomever is chosen as leader of that advisory board or co-leader to come and present items to council, in my opinion. That would be my recommendation.
So I assume we're at the point where we need to develop some bylaws around this, some rules for operations. And so do we need a motion for that or is that a task that can just be undertaken?
Well, if it's, the only way the council can really speak is by majority vote. So if the majority informs me that you want me to pursue maybe turning this Austin ordinance into something that we can use and then draft a set of bylaws that you guys can review and comment on, then I'll, I can proceed on.
We just need to provide guidance.
If you would, just make it a motion and instruct me to proceed.
I move that we have Carvin's office review the Austin ordinance and tailor to our needs. We'll vote on it at a later date.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
And number eight, bond communication methods, facts, town hall meetings, bond items on the agenda.
Thank you, mayor. So this is kind of an amalgamation of several different topics that you showed, listed here. I did put together, or take the liberty to try and put together a certain set of questions. Some of them are going to be repetitive, because these are public works types, infrastructure projects, that we could issue an FAQ once it is approved by our bond council and get out the facts as it relates to the bonds themselves that are on the ballot for May. I know that there has been some conversation on social media about this. There's been some speculation about the cost, there's been some speculation about what it will be used for. But I would caution folks to please be patient. The misinformation does far more harm than getting your FAQ, getting your facts, and then deciding on the merits. As Carvin has said and as I have mentioned to you all, the city and the city staff are not allowed to advocate for or against the bonds. We put out factual information and factual information only for the residents to make a decision. So I did put those FAQs in front of you. I've had a couple of additional ones that have come forward that I'm happy to discuss, adding the pros and cons of those or any others that you may find that you think would be beneficial. You will see that the first one there, as it deals with the water wells, the first one starts with why is this on the ballot and goes down to what other options do we have, all the way to when and where is voting. There are a couple of special interest questions or ones that might relate specifically to the topic. You'll see those in italics. Doesn't the city already have water wells? Doesn't the city already have a water provider? I've had some other questions submitted that might be included. One was in relationship to the social media posts that are going around about obtaining three bids. That is not how this process works for any city. While it might seem sensical, the, I talked to our city engineer today. If you go with one person and you pick out of a list of providers, three contractors, you're getting three points of touch, if you will, from that particular contractor. They don't have all the specifications for the wells, the wastewater treatment plant, or the INI repair. They don't have all of those specifics and all the engineering information that they need from which to make an informed quote to the city, which is why you look to your city engineer to give you, as I mentioned to you, those OPCs or those opinions of probable cost. Your city engineer is pulling that from the 15 or 20 cities that they work for. They have priced bid, put the specs out for these projects for not just Rome, but for every other city that they represent, which is where they arrive at their estimation. So yes, I could call three different water contractors that drill wells and I could say, "Look, I need you to drill a well X feet deep. How much is that going to cost?" One may give me $10 a foot, one may give me 15, one may give me 20, and please be mindful, I'm making those numbers up. But when I take that back to Upper Trinity and I speak to Mr. Shaw, who is with the Conservation District, and he gives me a number of approximately $750,000 per well, he is basing that on every other city that he's advising. It can go 750,000 to a million. And it depends on whether you have to buy property in order to have the right of way from which to drill or do you have to acquire any easement? So there are so many variables in this that this is why I caution us to please be patient. I'm getting the information for you as quickly as possible, but the last thing that I want to do is be accused of violating my own oath as a city manager or running afoul of the Ethics Commission. That's not something I enjoy. So these are the questions that I have put forward. We've had, as I mentioned to you before, there have been another question that's been submitted of why do we need these projects when Rome isn't growing? I will tell you that Rome is growing. I know it's hard for people who are not part of the growing process or talking with the developers to understand, but I have met with Prairie Point recently, I've met with another developer for 250 acres adjacent to Prairie Point with another single-family residential development to come in. I talk with commercial folks routinely, up and down 114. I'm talking to folks every week, for the most part, about that. And one of the first questions that we all ask, get asked, is how do you get city services? And Mr. Dominguez can certainly weigh in on this, because I have he attend those meetings and I have Ms. Odom attend those meetings, because she runs the Planning and Zoding Committee and Mr. Dominguez is our water and sewer expert. And they all want to annex into the city so they can get city services. Otherwise, they have to become their own water district, which we hold the CC in on, so they're likely not going to get that to occur. They're not going to get police coverage, because they're outside of our city limits. There are just a variety of things that affect this. And I know for those who are not involved in city government and managing this city government, that seems foreign. Because if we're the consumer, right, and we're buying and we want to stay in the county because the taxes are lower than being in the city, that makes complete sense. But if you are a developer looking to provide services for your residents or your customers, I talked to a gentleman today who's looking to develop on that corner of 114 and 287 next to Love's. And his concern is, if you don't have capacity at your wastewater treatment plant, I can't bring any businesses for the residents of Rome. So we're going to wait and see what happens, because I can't develop that stretch of property for restaurants, retail, anything else and say, "Well, I get one in here and you can use the wastewater, but the 10 of you that I still haven't gotten in, you're not going to get any wastewater." That's the conversations I'm having with developers. So when you marry up the bonds and you're wanting to be factual and it's hard to see from the outside in, kind of how the sausage is made, it's difficult to understand, but I promise you, Rome is growing. We have a total square miles of 19 in our ETJ. That's a big city. And as it continues to come and as these developers are coming to me, because we do sit at the crossroads of the metroplex to a great extent now, we're hot commodity. We get tens of thousands of cars that go through this city every day and that's not about to stop. So retail, commercial, some single-family residential, et cetera, that's going to continue to force Rome to grow. So if there's other questions you'd like me to include, I'm happy to add those to the list, but these are the ones that I have thought through and/or heard from folks that are being asked in the community and as of yet are not being clearly answered, so I want to make sure I haven't missed anything. So if there's no feedback on the questions, I'll proceed with the ones that I have here, plus those two extras that were brought to me. The next question I would have for council is having town hall-style meetings where staff can be available to answer questions for folks who would like to have those questions answered. In cities I've worked for before, we've gone into actual homes. So if someone in Crown Point or Ellis or Chisholm wanted to host in their home, staff makes themselves available and we generally just sit around with a glass of tea and water and we have conversations about what's going on in the city from a variety of fronts. Council is not invited from the standpoint of having a quorum, because you then become a walking quorum and that's an issue. So if you want to send one, maybe two council members, I've done that in the past, but definitely not three or more of you in that particular home, if we open up homes to that. We can also host here from the town hall-style meeting and open those for folks. But I would say that that's an important part of this process, to open it up for people to ask, because I'd much rather they call me. And even if we agree to disagree, I'd much rather that they call and ask their questions than be frustrated and not have the information that they need. So if council's interested in that, I would like some direction as to how many, how often, and what format you might be looking for.
I, I know in my neighborhood, I think I can think of several people that would be happy to have city officials come in and talk to them and provide information that is accurate. I'm sorry, mayor. And so I think that's a great idea, I have no concerns. Does anyone on council have concerns? Are we okay with directing staff to move forward with planning?
Let's move forward.
So I would suggest we have two options here. And if folks want to appear here and do not have a home from which they want to host it within their neighborhood or they don't live in a particularly, it's more of a loose neighborhood than one that has a monument sign up front, we're happy to have two here. And if others in the community want to contact me and see if we can arrange an evening time where we can come into the home and speak, we're absolutely happy to do that as well. It would just, we just have to agree to some ground rules before we get started, because this is meant to be a conversation. And I understand the frustration and the concerns, but we definitely want to interact as we are friends and neighbors.
Okay, I think you have the direction. So for the questions, I make a motion to approve the proposed questions relative to the May bond election.
Oh, second.
Aye. And as far as dates, Amanda? Do you, oh, you want to?
I'll work those out.
Okay, perfect.
I don't need it, mayor. Mayor, I'm sorry, but your microphone's not on.
Turned it off, because apparently when I have it on, Mrs. King likes to reprimand me. Anyway, but it's a wastewater system option. And I really, you know, the bond thing came down so fast, we didn't get a chance really to even explore any other options. Since that meeting on the 8th, though, or, no, it was actually on the 10th, I had an opportunity to go over and talk to Mayor White. He's the mayor over at Runaway Bay. If y'all remember about a year ago, they had an issue with their sewage over there. Their sewage is about 60 years old. And they had an issue. And anyway, he said, you know, he said, "Self and my council, we all got together and we worked on it." And I said, "Did you get bond?" And he said, "No." He said, no, we're doing it all with. And so I did, he has a pamphlet that he has there in his office, and I did pick up those. If you guys want to pass it down, if you don't want to give it back, just toss it. There you go, give you two that way. But anyway, but he talked about, you know, how they partnered up. It wasn't just, you know, he worked with this council and the council, you said, it was, it was all hands on deck and everybody went on, went in with it. They went for grants, apparently they have applied with like five different grants. It's mentioned here in his letters that he'd sent out. And their city engineer even submitted a grant on their behalf. They went through their congressman, Ronnie Jackson, they've dealt with the county and their commissioners, in addition to their state representative, Lynn Stuckey, and state Senator Tan Parker. Anyway, I just wanted the council to be aware that we do have options. Yes, I understand that the applying for a bond, it does take some time and they are time consuming, but it's, it's not an impossible task. And Mayor White was very adamant. He said, we just don't have the tax base to support multimillion dollar bonds. And I appreciated his candor, to be honest with you. Anyway, but you guys can take a look at these. I'm not asking you to make any, any direction or anything else. I'm just suggesting that, you know, we do have some options. And the other thing that I wanted to talk about, where are my things? And I had brought it up when we had that meeting. And it was actually a suggestion that was made to me a few years back from Mr. Loftus about privatizing some of our, you know, things that go on. We don't have an economic development or anything like that. However, I have looked into three different sources as far as buying out our water, our wastewater treatment assets. And if they take it over, it's everything. They take the clay pipes and all. I'm sorry? And well, we do, that's negotiated into the contract, if we, if we did do that. All I'm saying is it's probably an option that we could consider. The ones that I have checked with are Central State's Water Resources, Aqua Texas, and Southwest Water. Well, of course, you know, if we're not going to go into it with an open mind, it's automatic no before we even get started.
Yeah, Mike, I have something to say.
Mr. Atkins is telling me no. Okay. It's, I just brought it to the table.
And it's on for executive, it's on for executive session. Are we convening an executive session?
No.
If you look at the condition of our infrastructure, as documented in previous meetings, I can't imagine any water company coming in here and actually valuing our assets of anything at work. In fact, I believe we might have to pay them to take it on at this point. That's why I didn't push that any further.
I just offered it up as an option. That's all. I wanted to bring that to your attention.
And if I can bring councils' attention back around to this, this is not the first time you've discussed this issue, not any of them. This is multiple years of having this conversation, because if you'll recall, the West Plant is under an enforcement action from 2015. And we have had a conversation with TCQ as recently as last week, that if we don't do something about that plant, they are going to come in and they will be fining us. And they can find us every day for the violations that occur. So this is not a new issue. This is not something that's just been discussed by this council. It's been discussed by several. If you'll recall, there was even a bond that was potentially approved to do the bare minimum to fix that West Plant back three years ago, when it was a couple of million dollars. And because we continue to have the conversation, that cost has gone up exponentially since then. So we're really on the precipice of a few paths. We're either going to fix our assets and we're going to have the infrastructure that the community has to have, or we're going to have the state agency that oversees us start to be a part of our daily operations. And that's something that we have to make that conversation about and we have to make a decision.
Well, I believe the bond that you're talking about was that revenue bond that was approved by the council. It didn't require voter approval, and I'm not sure why it was not acted on at that point.
I will tell you why. Because the capacity within your utility fund was eaten up by cost escalations and costs, not only of the projects, but daily operations, because we have not raised water and sewer rates over the years like we were supposed to. As we discussed at the February 10th meeting, our sewer rate stayed the same for 25 years at $11 and some odd cents. That is a very inefficient way, if not, it will put that fund into a negative balance. And in the early 2000s, the auditor came to council and said, you are about to be insolvent because you are running negative balances in the utility fund for so long. So based on that, we don't have the basic funds to do preventative maintenance. And Mr. Dominguez, if you wouldn't mind keying in on this, so I'm not the only voice in the room.
Yeah, so I spoke to TCQ last week and yeah, I was just discussing the options we did have. And we're very close on getting found daily and that's just the next step. And selling the sewer plant, you're still going to pay for the cost. It's, somebody's got to pay for it, whether it's us or a company. You're, you're not going to get anything out of it, like Mr. Loftus says, we might have to pay. And the longer we wait, it's only going to get worse. It's really bad now. We have a, we have a biological demand issue. We have constant overflow. We cannot take on any growth on the West Plant. And your INI, your pipes, your manholes, everything, it's in the worst condition I have ever, I have ever dealt with. So waiting around is not going to help at all. And it has to be addressed.
I'll just say on the Aqua topic, and if there are anything like the, the other ones are anything like Aqua, I have multiple friends who would show me pictures where their water's yellow or it's reeks of chlorine, or I just, I don't even want to play with that.
That's the water, but they do sewage as well. They do this, they, they were the ones that contracted with the sewage over that new Shale Creek development. That's Aqua Texas, and then the water is provided by the city of Fort Worth.
I don't want to mess with it, but I think grants are a good option. We just, we don't have the time, we don't have the time to wait around and try and work for those, when we have all the issues just sitting here right now.
It's also my understanding that we've applied for grants before for these projects and have not made the cut for that type of funding.
I was talking with a citizen today, and my understanding is median income of our citizens in Rome is so high that we don't qualify for many grants that have been written previously.
Even if we go forward with the bonds, which we are going to do, there's nothing that precludes us from pursuing grants, Austin. All of the above approach.
Very good.
If you sit around and wait for the bond or the grants, we're going to be paying fees, it's going to be putting us way behind. You're going to have to do the bonds.
All right.
But I want to, because I got to pay the taxes also, but you got to do what you got to do. Car breaks down, you got to fix it.
Future agenda items?
Some type of spring cleaning event in coordination with Northwest ISD, big event, volunteer day.
Along with the theme of growth in Rome, with future growth, I've kind of given some thought to how our city employees are going to have additional tasks. And perhaps these tasks may grow beyond their capabilities to do really a good job, so split up. So I would like to place on the agenda a discussion of employing the possibility of employing third-party resources for things like human resources, timekeeping, and possibly an ombudsman role. And I'd encourage anyone else to think of what other third-party resource we might be able to use. I believe that the use of a human resources company to assist could possibly save us hundreds of thousands in compliance issues in the future.
Any other items? Make motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is 7:40, we're out of here.